All right, the time is seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order. We have the warrants, we have a quorum, we have our town clerk, and we have myself, Keith Menard, the moderator. We also have before us non-resident members of, well, non-resident, yeah, members of town meeting there, people who may not reside here, and are still here in official capacity in order to be able to provide insight that may be needed from time to time at town meeting. Is there any dissent to allowing those people to speak? Okay, seeing none, they will be allowed. Over here, we have our illustrious finance committee. If you guys can wave your hands, thank you for all that you've done to prepare for town meeting and getting the town flyers out so everybody knows what's going on, the people who make town meeting possible. Today, we have our checkers, Lisa Postma and Don Postma. We have our counters, Don Postma, Aubrey Harris, Lee Blanias, our constables, Carol Field and Ben Tassino, and our mic runner, Liam Menard. So a little bit about how town meeting will be run. We're actually going to be moving things around a little bit this year, or for this session, as I said in one of our recent meetings with the Board of Selectmen, we try to balance efficiency with making sure that we can make sure that people are being fairly represented and having their voices heard at town meeting. So, you know, in light of that, because we try to constantly review the processes and see what we can do in order to make sure that the things that need thoroughly, being thoroughly discussed, can be discussed and those that are just rote, parts of our business can be moved on efficiently. So with that, a little bit about how town meeting will be run, a motion has been made and seconded. At that point, we'll entertain questions and debate. I'll ask if anyone would like to speak on the issue, which is to ask questions or debate the issue. If there is, then we'll move to the traditional proponent speech. If there's not, then we'll move right to see if there's any dissent to passing the article unanimously, and of course, if there is not, then the article will be considered passed unanimously. After proponent speech, if we go to that room, there'll be question and answer. Please wait for the microphone to arrive. Once it arrives, please state your name and street address and direct all questions and debate through the moderator. After the debate is exhausted or the question is called, also known as moving the previous question, which needs a second and a two-thirds vote, and you must be recognized in order to do this, so make sure you raise your hands when you're recognized, the mic gets to you, then you can say move the previous question. Just blurting out, I move the question, does nothing. Votes will be taken in various ways, as I said, by unanimous consent, where I say, is there any dissent to passing this unanimously? If nobody speaks, then it will be considered passed unanimously, and then our normal voice or counted votes. For a vote which requires a count, please stand if able and raise your voter card. If you're not able to stand and, just please raise your voter card. So from time to time, and actually, for most of the meeting, you'll hear me say, if a motion is the same as what's printed in the warrant or in the flyer, I'll say I'll accept a motion as printed in the warrant, and there's a second, we'll move on from there, rather than reading out the whole motion, which most of you already have in the warrant or in the flyer. Any amendments must be made in writing, should be made after question and answer, in other words, during debate. You must be recognized to make the motion, and the motion must be deemed by myself to be within scope of the article that we are considering. So please keep in mind, while we're doing it, it's serious and has both long-term and short-term impacts to all of us, we're all neighbors, please be respectful, enjoy the process, it truly is a great one that's been given to us. So whether, if you're still getting checked in, if everyone could just remain in place for a second, I would just like to have a moment of silence in memory of David Cortez. He was a longstanding member of our Board of Selectmen who passed last year. He's greatly missed, and I just thought it was appropriate for this body to recognize him with a moment of silence. Thank you. Now if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now on May 9th, we will be having our town election. If the following people could stand, Harold Davis, Ross Smith, Michael Hughes, Maxwell Postma, Carol Field, Heather Morin, Jerome DeSone, Sarah Greeman, Colin Hare, John Furno, Ryan Hogan, and Michael Greco. Thank you all for taking part in the process, win or lose, we appreciate you stepping forward and trying to help make the town a better place to live in, so thank you all. And I will say, this is where I'll get on my soapbox, just for a split second, I know this isn't a, you know, big national election with, you know, with the president on the ballot, but I'm telling you that these races here matter more to you in your day-to-day lives than anything that happens on the national stage, so please make sure you get out there and vote next week. Is there any dissent to dispensing with the reading of the warrant? Seeing none, I do have the attested warrant that was signed by the entirety of the Board of Selectmen, as well as our constable on April 19th. So I'll now accept a, a little bit about how this works, if you haven't been here before, we run our annual town meeting, as well as special town meeting concurrently, so what I'll do now is accept a motion to recess the annual town meeting until the conclusion of the special town meeting. Most of them made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, most of them made and second, is there a dissent? Seeing none, move on to the special town meeting. Is there any dissent to dispensing with the reading of the warrant for the special town meeting? Okay, seeing none, I also have a duly attested warrant, signed by the entirety of the Board of Selectmen, as well as our constable Carol Field, on April 13th. I will accept a motion from the floor to move Article 1 as printed in the warrant. Most of them made, is there a second? Most of them made and seconded, would anyone like to speak on Article 1? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 1 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 1 passes unanimously. Article 2, accept a motion from the floor to transfer from free cash to sum of $75,000 to the fiscal year 2023 snow and ice account. Most of them made, is there a second? Most of them made and seconded, would anyone like to speak on this article? Okay, hearing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 2 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 2 passes unanimously. Article 3, accept a motion to pass Article 3 as printed in the warrant. Most of them made, is there a second? Most of them made and seconded, would anyone like to speak on Article 3? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 3 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 3 passes unanimously. Article 4, accept a motion to transfer the sum of $115,000 from free cash to fund the purchase of two police cruisers and all associated costs. Most of them made, is there a second? Most of them made and seconded, would anyone like to speak on this article? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5, accept a motion to transfer the sum of $60,000 from ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation account to fund the purchase of a fire command vehicle and all associated costs. Most of them made, is there a second? Most of them made and seconded, would anyone like to speak on this article? Okay, can we get a proponent speech? Hold on one second, so now, now we're gonna go and allow proponent speech on this one. Matt, do you guys have anyone lined up to speak on this article?
Good evening, I'm Ken Vincent, the fire chief, live at 23 Glen Street. Command vehicle is a fast vehicle, for those of you who aren't aware of what the purpose is, it's not just a cruiser, but it's a fast vehicle or a command vehicle that arrives ahead of the fire truck or ambulance to begin assessment of an emergency and treat patients. It contains life-saving equipment, medical equipment, including a defibrillator, emergency medications such as oxygen, natrium, heparin, and glucose, and it contains equipment needed to help a fire situation, such as fire extinguishers and forcible entry equipment. It is either operated by the assistant chief or the chief or the assistant chief, both of whom are paramedics. The chief's vehicle is 10 years old, about 90,000 miles, which might seem like a lot, not a lot of miles, but they're very rough miles, rough response to, it's a tough response on vehicles, it idles for hours, it's incident scenes, and also goes on the road to calls without a warm-up period. Sometimes they have to drive off the road and into the state forest to mitigate incidents, find hikers and things like that. It's also subjected to all the elements that we have, because it's not, it's not kept in the garage. And that's all I have about that. If anybody has any questions, I'd certainly be willing to answer them.
Okay, so after the proponent speech, are there any questions?
Hi, Lisa Mead, 176 South East Main Street.
Hold on just one second, I think we're gonna adjust the volume up a little bit. If you can get a little closer to your mouth.
Lisa Mead, 176 South East Main Street.
Thank you.
I'm questioning why this doesn't come out of capital budget, and if this is funds for the ambulance, shouldn't we say the ambulance is funded for ambulance repairs for new ambulances?
Okay, so the question is, why is this not coming out of the capital budget, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Matt, do you want to field that one?
The capital budget, usually to get something from capital, it takes about five years to get it done, and also, as far as the ambulance receipts, there's plenty of money in the ambulance receipts to cover that. We have our both ambulances that are in very good shape, so we're gonna put off buying ambulance for a couple of years, and the ambulance, I should say, the fast command vehicle goes to medical calls when the ambulance is not available, there's not another paramedic in town. Myself and the assistant chief are the only paramedics that are living in town for the time being. Does that answer your question?
That's my, I asked that. That's my job.
Has your question been answered?
This is someone, yes, but I'm-
Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I wanted to know, is this the chief's vehicle, is that used just during the call hours that you're on duty?
24 hours a day, seven days a week, for both of us. The fire chief and the police chief were able to take their cars home 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This would be the same thing, that car, the one I have, if we got the cruiser, would be passed down to the assistant chief, because it still has some light.
Other questions? Right over there. So just after you ask the question, go ahead and pass the mic back to the mic runner, please, and I'll ask if there's a follow-up at that point.
Okay, my name's Monique Zellman, I live at 3 Sanford Circle, and my question is, is this a need or a want? Seeing that we have a chief's vehicle already, you know, is there a need for two, seeing that there's a lot of priorities in town at this time? I have a lot of respect for first responders, and I grew up in a first responder family, close family member who was chief for 30 years, never drove in a fire command vehicle, but that is why I ask that question, is this a need or a want?
This is a need, it's a tool that we need to maybe do our jobs effectively and get to citizens as quick as we can during emergencies, and it was also projected that we'd put it in the budget for the last two years, but it was cut. This would be coming out of ambulance appropriations, so it would not come out of taxpayers, it comes out of the revenue collected by us entering emergency calls in town.
Has your question answered?
Um, he has answered.
Okay, other questions?
Just out of curiosity, John Lohbaugh, 28 now, West Main Street. So you're passing on your vehicle to your assistant, correct? So you're gonna have this new vehicle full-time? So you're gonna go to every call every night?
Pass the mic back, please.
I won't go to every call every night, because that's not how things work, but yes, I'm 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the past 12 years as chief.
And, your follow-up, go ahead.
I'm still curious, because if that's the case, shouldn't we house up the fire station so you can go down there, or is there other people that are gonna be have access to this car, if you're gonna go up? I'm asking a question, because it doesn't make sense to me if you're gonna just pass on one vehicle, and to have this one to do the same thing you do with your vehicle now, and you keep on saying that you're gonna go up before the ambulance goes out, you just ride to it, and the police department is already there, am I correct, not looking?
Everything needs to be directed up here and recognized, I want to speak, please.
I'm just making a statement, I just don't understand that you're gonna have one, and your assistant's gonna have one, and you said in the beginning that you're gonna be using this all the time, to go on each call before a fire truck or a police get here.
Actually, that's not what I said. What I said was, we do answer calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and when the ambulance is out of town, each one of us either answers the call with our cruiser, unless we have two people in the station, and that's myself and the assistant chief, then we answer the call with the ambulance, but we have access, the same as other department heads to our vehicles, 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, another question, it's right over here.
Thank you, Dave Burton, 30 Hollis Stone. Chief, I'm all about you having access to respond to my house in the middle of the night if I have an emergency. The $60,000, what, do you know what the overall fund is at right now? How big a number are we talking compared to what's in the receipt fund?
I don't have that specific number right now, I'd have to defer the finance director for that.
Dean Love, a finance director, as of 4/30, April 30th, it's about $766,000, but as stated, this fund is used to put the operating, you'll see on the Article 2, there's a transfer from receipts reserve appropriation towards the operating budget, and it's also used to help fund the ambulances when their time's up to be replaced.
Hope you're wearing your fip at length.
Jacob Schultberg, 2 Stone Hill Drive. It was said that the vehicle's gonna get passed down, I watched the presentation in the Board of Selectmen in capital on this, and there was a concern with the rising maintenance costs of the current vehicle. I'm curious, if we keep this vehicle, can we afford to maintain it while also maintaining a new vehicle, a new brush truck, an old brush truck, and the rest of the fleet?
I don't see that as a problem with the budget that we have.
Other questions?
Sheriff Chamberlain, West Street. My understanding is that the chief and assistant chief would have those vehicles with them at all times, whether they're at the station or at home, and for them to respond quickly, you know Douglas is huge with all these dark roads, somebody's gotta get to an emergency-
So just to cut you out briefly, is this a question?
Yes.
Okay.
The question is, is, if you say that the vehicle that we currently have has 90,000 miles and it's starting to go into disrepair, that to me would be like a second vehicle. What would happen if that vehicle dies, and then we don't have that vehicle prepared, the new vehicle prepared to be able to use it? That's my question, what is the backup plan if we don't improve this?
We can head the mic back, please.
Again, these are emergency calls, medical calls we're answering, and fire calls, time is like, the time, as time goes by, the clock ticks, it may not be a good outcome, this is why we're asking for this.
Jacob Schultberg, 2 Stone Hill. I just hate seeing the ambulance receipt funds used for this. Is there a way of selling the retired or unused equipment that's sitting behind the fire station? There's gotta be at least $60,000 worth sitting back there, just curious if we can sell that instead of the ambulance receipts to enable the purchase.
I don't really have any comment on that, outside of the fact that we're arranging for an option to sell some of that equipment. I don't think it'll raise $60,000, it's only, I can think of two, two pieces that are out there for that, but we're not asking for that, and that's a totally separate issue. This is life-saving for cruisers to be able, and that are tools to be able to do our job.
Other questions? Can I say none, would anyone like to speak on the issue?
Hello, my name's Adam Roy, Southwest Main Street. Full disclosure, I'm a fire captain in another municipality, I don't work in Douglas. I know the value of the car, I ride the car, that's my job, I'm first around the scene, just like the chief had stated. We are one of very few, if any municipalities, that the fire chief and assistant chief do not have a technical vehicle, especially when they account for 50% suppression of me and my staff. Excuse me a second. So it's very unlikely, I know everyone's looking at it like it's a perk, but it is a tool. If the ambulance is on the call, we see them driving, or no for all the time, I don't know if anyone's under the pressure that we're being protected by anybody, there is no one in that station, there's no ambulance, so if you suffer any emergency, you're gonna rely on either the assistant chief or the chief to respond to your house. If you're comfortable waiting for an ambulance coming from North Bridge, Rochelle Beach, I disagree, because I'm just like, also, I am a fully certified foreman mechanic, and I actually took a look at that car today, and it's embarrassing, I'm embarrassed as a tax payer, that's the vehicle that we have, it's 10 years old, it's rotting underneath, it's a liability. Furthermore, I work with Assistant Chief Manning on the state hazmat team, and I saw the truck she's driving, and I said, that's the truck the town bought for you? She said, no, I had to buy my own truck.
We're getting beyond scope a little bit here. It's about this vehicle.
It is about this vehicle, but didn't we say that that was gonna be given to Assistant Chief Manning?
Yes, the vehicle that's being passed down.
Correct, so I believe it's relevant. So, you know, we're sitting here talking about $60,000, and taking it out of the account of $700,000, with no implications to any tax pay ahead, it's not gonna raise anybody's taxes, so as far as I'm concerned, when I look at that car, I think of it as an additional ambulance, additional piece of apparatus. I know that if that ambulance is out, someone in my family is suffering a medical emergency, I wanna make sure a paramedic is there quickly, especially if it's a cardiac. The older I get, the medical calls I go on, people don't realize how you help the clients after the age of 50. I see people that are perfectly healthy one day, you know, suffer severely the next, and it is a matter of time. I just can't understand why we won't take money we already have that won't cost us a dime for a place of ambulance and severe disrepair.
Okay, you can pass the mic back, please. Anyone else like to speak on the issue, in the back? You do.
I do?
Yes.
Okay. I was so proud of 29 to break out, I forgot, so I'm gonna speak on this until I've heard all the questions. I believe in our fire department, I believe in giving them the tools they need to do their job, and this is an advanced vehicle that's gonna allow us to expand the rescue service that we need on an aging town that is very large in square miles. So I would give all the tools that this department needs to make them as effective as they can in order to save our lives and help us when we need them, so I'm in favor of that, just on the question.
Anyone else like to speak on the article?
Since no one would love to comment.
I was actually over you, it's gone.
I have to tell you that, again, West Street, my spouse had chest pains, and she called the ambulance, and it was the chief in his vehicle that came there first, and there is nothing more comforting than knowing that you have somebody there, and they made it there before the ambulance. I just think that it's extremely important for us to have the equipment that we need to serve our community. It's only growing, it's only growing. You look at all those warehouses, you think we're not gonna have any emergencies around? And all the emergencies, if we go help all the towns, and all the towns have to come and come for us, I think we need it.
Okay, can you go ahead and state your name again, please?
Cheryl Chamberlain, West Street.
Thank you. Didn't I just give a whole lecture at the beginning of the meeting about not just yelling, I called the question? Right over here.
Good evening, my name's Kelly Manning, I'm the assistant fire chief. Despite my youthful appearance, I've actually been with the department all 17 years, so I know we have a lot of, we're competing for a lot of resources in town, and one of the reasons, I just want to address the funding source as being ambulance receipts. We attempted to bring this to capital, and it didn't make it through that process, and the other two times that we were gonna bring it to capital, it was because we thought it was gonna be voted to the operating budget, so it didn't go to capital in the two previous fiscal years. So that's part of the reason that we're asking for having ambulance receipts. Back in 2004, ambulance receipts were used to purchase this vehicle, when a command vehicle was bought at that time, so this funding source has been used in the past for this particular purchase, and it directly supports the ambulance department. it directly supports the ambulance department. It's money we already have, it's not coming out of the taxpayers' pocket, it's not taken away from any other projects, and we feel that it's really important. Right now I am driving a personal vehicle, it's not adequately equipped with warning lights and sirens, which means that there might be some delay in me getting to your emergency in my vehicle. I am on call twenty-four seven from home, like the fire chief, and I respond from home with my personal vehicle to medical emergencies. I have the same medical equipment in my personal vehicle that the fire chief has, and I am a paramedic. And I want to get there to save your life, so I'm asking that you support this, uh, switching ambulance receipts to purchase this, so we can come out and get to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So just before we continue on, I've heard this, this phrase uttered a couple times now, which is, we try to get it through Capitol. So just to kind of give anyone who may not be initiated in the process an idea of what Capitol is, it's something that we'll be actually going through later in town meeting, where the Capitol Committee comes up with a list of priorities and places that they believe the town should spend money on different items, and that is a process that gets brought forth to, to the town on an annual basis. Is that a fair description of the Capitol Committee and how that works? Okay. So anyone else like to speak on the issue? Right over here?
Mr. Moderator, I'd love to ask a question.
No, but go ahead anyway.
Okay, thank you. My name is Carol Gogolinski, fifty-five Island Road. I'm just curious, where I know that they're going to be keeping the vehicles we sell, let's say that the chief was going out of town for a couple of weeks, would he then leave that vehicle with the assistant chief so that we know that we have a good vehicle in town to take care of whatever had to be done?
So in all of your two-week vacations that you take, will you be leaving the vehicle, the better vehicle with the assistant fire chief? Yes? Right over here.
Monika Salas, three Center Circle. So I think that if we were talking about one vehicle is in really bad shape and is not going to last much longer, and we're looking to replace that vehicle with another vehicle, that would be one thing. But I think, you know, we're looking at maintaining two vehicles. And, you know, I'm wondering if safety in the town has been negatively affected because we only have one vehicle. Again, I have a lot of respect for the first responders, thank you for what you do, and I think you do a superb job as it is. You know, I'm not sure that this is going to change the safety that you provide. And another question, another thing that I wonder, and I don't know if it'll be answered right now, but is, does the fire chief and the assistant chief respond at the same time, two calls? And if they don't, it's usually one or the other, you know, again, why are we proposing two vehicles to be in operation?
In the back, right here.
Motion to move the question.
You got it. Hang on, hang on, already. You haven't got the mic, and I don't know your name, and I don't know where you live.
Thirty bucks, thirty-five man, you want to vote? Motion to move the question?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes have it, we'll move to a vote. All of those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
The ayes clearly have it, and a majority will. I'll now accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting and reconvene the annual. Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That's good, because I really hope you have better things to do with your time. All right, I will now accept the motion to move Articles One, Two, and Three. Motion made, is there a second? All right, so the way this one works, I should say, it has printed in the warrant. This one works a little differently than most of our other articles. As we said, we moved the three motions together. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off the header for each of these sources of funding. And this is the gene disclosure, and that even though we are just doing the summary expenditures, what we are actually moving is the entire budget as printed in the warrant. So I will read off each of these headings. If you have any questions for anything that is located under one of those, you yell hold. This is the one time in the meeting, you do not have to be recognized in order to do so, and then we'll go back to that. After that, then we will go through, answer any questions, go through debate, and then move the questions one, two, and three. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll begin to read. I'm going to really attempt to read. My wife's been telling me now for a year that I need glasses, and I refuse to get those until I'm fifty, so I've got another twenty years. I don't know why anyone laughed at that. Total general government. Did I hear hold? He did. Total public safety. Total public works. Total health and human services. Total culture and recreation. Total education. Total insurance and employee benefits. Total debt service. Total capital outlay. Total special articles. Total transfers. Okay, so the hold was on the total general government, which was right over here. You have any questions on that?
Yeah, Rakesh Bosker, to Compass Point Drive. I don't have any objections. My question is about civil defense and increase from ten thousand to like what looks like almost three to four times as much. I know in a budget this large, it's probably not that much, but what does that entail as far as what we, what does civil defense add to increase give us?
Sorry for the delay. Matt?
Mr. Moderator, through you, can a question or thank you for the question?
Can you also state your job title, please?
So Matt, Oldington Town Administrator. We are increasingly moving more of our funding for different operations into the civil defense budget because they reflect, that reflects a more accurate accounting of the fact that certain operations of the town are used for benefit of the whole town and not any one of the departments. We have, for instance, a brand-new public safety radio system. There is an annual maintenance contract that goes, we're going to have the experts who install it come check it every year and troubleshoot every system. The cost of that is in civil defense and was not there before. The code red system that we use to notify you of things that are going on in town is funded out of civil defense, so that was added several years ago to the civil defense budget. So as we go along and build the capacity that supports all of our public safety functions, it's put in civil defense. Does that answer the question?
Right.
Other questions on total general government? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the budgets, on Articles One, Two, or Three? Okay, seeing none, it's ready to send to passing Articles One, Two, and Three unanimously. Seeing none, could possibly be the shortest budget conversation we've ever had in the town's history, Articles One, Two, and Three, passing unanimously. Okay, I will now accept a motion. I will now accept advice from our town council.
It might be good just to state the funding sources just from the record.
It was printed in the warrant. It's ready to send to, let's see. No one to read that, would that make you happy? Okay, okay. So it's ready to send to hearing and acting upon the report and recommendations of the Finance Committee in further to fix the salary and compensation of elected officials as presented to in the Finance Committee's fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget recommendation and further to approve a total budget of thirty-one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, consisting of fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, transferred from reserve for reduction of excluded debt account, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, transferred from ambulance receipts, reserve appropriation, ten thousand, transferred from wetlands protection fund, fifty thousand, sixty-seven, transferred from free cash, and the remaining thirteen million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three, to be raised thirty, what, thirty-one million? What did I say? Thirteen, shame on me. And the remaining thirty-one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-three, to be raised and appropriated, all as set forth in the column entitled Fiscal Year Twenty Four, Finance Committee, Board of Selectment, Town Administrator, Recommended Budget, in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget Message for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four for the purpose of funding the annual operating budget of the town for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four. Is there any dissent to passing that? Okay, seeing none, that is passed unanimously. Okay, I will accept a motion to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars per its operating and capital assessment by Blackson Valley Vocational Regional School District, and the district for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, which is inclusive of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars of proposition two and a half exempted funds to be applied against debt services associated with Douglas previously two thousand and one voted amount for the district's addition and renovation project. Motion made, is there a second?
Twenty twenty-three, Chief.
That's what I thought. Well, it says, it says twenty twenty-two, so there's a typo, and we will go ahead and change that to twenty twenty-three in the motion. Is there a second for said motion? Motion made and seconded. Any questions on Article Four? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Four? Okay, also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article Four unanimously? Seeing none, Article Four passes unanimously. I will now accept a motion to move Articles Five, Six, Seven, and Eight as printed in the warrant. Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. These are yearly, perfunctory articles that we do in order to keep the town running. So any questions on these articles? Okay, seeing none, anyone like to speak on the articles? Also seeing none, it's ready to send to passing Articles Five, Six, Seven, and Eight unanimously. Seeing none, the articles pass unanimously. Okay, I'll now accept the motion to move Article Nine as printed in the warrant. Motion made and seconded. We are going to go right to Matt. This is a pretty in-depth and heavy topic, so we're going to go right to the quote-unquote proponent speech in order to kind of delve into this a little deeper. Matt, do you want the clicker?
I'm going to refrain, Mr. Moderator, from using the presentation unless there are more questions. I'd like to, if I may, make a quick presentation and see how the room feels and go from there.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind moving the mic closer.
People always tell me I'm shouting, and they yell at me for not speaking. It's loud to me sitting here. The state statute and local law that creates the position of town administrator sets aside the responsibilities of personnel director to the town administrator. And so when we post positions and we appoint people to different jobs in town, one of the things that I have to do is establish the rates of compensation for people when we hire them. And for many years, your town staff served you very, very royally and did not leave. And there wasn't a tremendous amount of pressure to investigate our rates of compensation versus other communities. And on top of that, the town of Douglas experienced for a prolonged period of time a lot of limitations on how much money you could spend in this budget. And your non-union public employees, especially town hall and highway workers and dispatchers, either did not get a large cost of living increase, in some years they got a zero, in some years they weren't even able to get the steps that they would have gotten to under the system. So as we come into last year and this year, and we have retirements and people, we have to recruit into some positions, we found ourselves having to advertise those positions at step five, and in some cases even higher, just to get people to apply. And the pool of people that are available and willing to do municipal government work is actually quite small. So you can imagine it is a seller's market, the person who has the credentials to serve can often pick and choose between more than one community in which to work. And if there's a significant salary gap, they may not come to Douglas. So in order to answer that problem, we had to look at these compensation tables that appear in your warrant every single year. It is town meetings' decision to vote these tables and to determine what your employees are going to be paid. And the system that existed was, was well thought out and well designed, but also very complex. So for instance, there were, in the management table, there were five different grades and ten different steps. So you had fifty different rates of compensation for managers, and we only have eight or nine people in that table. So we also, as we went through this, said we need to make the salaries of the town more competitive, but we also need to make the system a little bit easier to administer and reduce all this complexity. And that is what we set out to do. So there was a prolonged process, and I'm not going to the slides because I just want to test how much interest there is in the room to go through this, but the process involved, first and foremost, going to the market for all of the positions that we hire people into and comparing salaries for those against those communities that are posting right now, especially if they're similar in size. right now, especially if they're similar in size and not far away from Douglas, so our, our existing employees might consider them working there. The second thing we did is we interviewed all of our staff, department heads multiple times, just to gauge how people felt about their hours, whether or not they're being compensated fairly, whether or not the entire package, including benefits, was something that was still attractive to them. So we arrived at a proposal that included updating all the job descriptions for everyone that works in town and scoring those job descriptions against a list of skills that were required for that type of work, whether it's office assistant or highway, and then coming up with different grades. And that work was done by the town administrator, the finance director, the payroll administrator, the executive assistant to the select board and town administrator, and the town's treasurer. These five people have a great deal of insight into how the entire town works in terms of its budget and how the staff works together. And we arrived at these scores and we put the different positions into the different grades, and then we said, once an employee is set in a grade, their step will be set to their level of commitment to the town, their longevity with the town, in the seat they're in. So if someone's been promoted to a directorship, their director salary will be set by how long they've been a director, not by how long they've worked for the town. And the last item I would like to bring up is, in terms of steps, the original system was designed and was very heavily geared towards being a merit-based system, that every year there would be evaluations and that there would be assignments of merit, and people would work their way through a ten-step system based on that. Much of the implementation of the system was done before I started working here, and it was not done, it was never truly implemented, so steps were being awarded more on longevity and at times the town did not really tie to merit. I think we've all either employed other people or worked for other people when we think about this, you know, someone who has stayed with you for a really long time adds a tremendous amount of value because they, they know where all the streets are. There are a lot of town employees who know where many of you live, when you stand up and say your address, they've either been there on a fire call or plowed snow past your house, and that level of experience is really hard to quantify how valuable it is to the town, but I can tell you it's truly very important because the speed and accuracy with which we're able to answer your needs is directly a function of experience. So instead of doing ten steps that are all compressed up to the beginning of someone's tenure with the town, we spread the steps out, so all the way up to step thirty, but we don't give a step every year. So when you first come in the door, you get a probationary step, then step one, step two, and step three, because your first three years you're learning a lot, but then you get your next step at step five, and then not another one until ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty. If you're still working here after thirty years, you're either working at the highway department or looking, or willing to, you know, it's, it's so much fun to be at work that you're wanting to pay us to come because after thirty years, that's paternity economics workout. So some of the increase in the compensation budget reflects the fact that many of our town employees have worked for the town for a very long time. So if we took their step one salary and made it competitive with, say, the step one salary in Uxbridge or Sutton, and then we said, but you're not being hired today, you've already worked for us for thirty years, you can see where that would generate a fairly substantial increase for that employee. So that's the system as it's designed. The select board specifically tasked the town administrator to do this and to do it within a balanced budget. The budget that's presented to you tonight is balanced within our resources and still accomplishes this compensation reform goal. Mr. Moderator, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions?
Justin Caswell, four, Walmart. I'm just wondering, so does this have to do with raising of my taxes or anything? I'm new to office, I'm just wondering.
Pass on that, Matt? Change it?
Oh, I just assumed Douglas would be answering. Sorry, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator threw you to the question there. The financial structure of the town relies upon a year-over-year increase in the levy to keep up with any number of things, inflation, the things we buy get more and more expensive, and our employees get raises, also cost of living. So I want to answer your question accurately, will the taxes of the town, will the levy go up, the amount of money we will raise from the real estate property tax base will go up by two point five percent? But within that budget, and with all the other resources that we gather in terms of chapter seventy and everything else, within that budget, these raises can be accommodated without any additional spending, so there's no override, we don't need extra, there's no transfer from free cash, it's all from what we've already written right here.
Question answered. Okay, other questions?
Debbie, anyone else listening? My question is really related to, now that you've gone through this entire process of redoing all of your job descriptions, trying to make the salaries competitive, is all of this available to the town's people to actually take a peek at, see what those job descriptions are? And also in terms of the internal postings only, is there a way that those postings can become more public within the town?
So that is outside the scope of what the compensation plans are, however, as an aside, where would one find that information now?
So, Mr. Moderator, if I may, we pride ourselves in Douglas, Douglas is the most transparent town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I will guarantee that for as long as I serve in this role, you will have access to every public record, every conversation we have that is a final, right? So we will post this on the website, so that, and it will stay there, so job descriptions and the salary structure will remain on the website forever. And in terms of, I don't know what the question of Mr. Moderator is asking about internal postings, do you mean postings for available positions? Yes. So we typically advertise, Mr. Moderator, all open positions in targeted environments where we're gonna, we're gonna find applicants. We always put it in the newspaper, it's either in the Blackstone Valley Tribune, or if it's a skill set that we think we need to advertise for a broader audience, it might be in the Worcester Telegram for about a week or two. The personnel bylaw, actually I think it's the policies and procedures of the town that's approved by the select board. This is a matter of judgment on the part of the town administrator acting as your personnel directors, whether or not we have staff internally that are qualified to fill a position, we are allowed to post that internally for ten days, but we do post it in a public place in town hall and at the library, that an internal position is being posted for existing employees in the town. Many of us in this profession feel that that's a good way to keep upward mobility and keep morale up, so people have the opportunity to move within the organization that they love, they don't want to leave it, but they might want to switch their job. But generally, if we have especially like a directorship, a significant management position, it is posted in numerous places.
Okay, other questions on this article? Over here, right, right over here, your first time speaker. You speak once before, you spoke once before, okay, she was first, I'm in the back. Welcome to allergy season.
Cheryl Tamblay, one oh six West Street. This is just kind of a clarification or understanding of the tables. So for example, a WS two with a column two is a salary of twenty-eight, seventy-three. Am I contrarian that anybody that is in that level of position for two years, that's what their salary is, and there's no impact as far as how well they perform? Like obviously performance is an issue where people can be terminated or promoted into another position, but it doesn't matter how hard you work or how lazy you are, you're gonna get that same salary while you're in that position?
You can cut it fast enough.
Sorry, I worked for the federal government when I was eighteen.
Lazy people, didn't they get raises?
Mr. Moderator, if I may. If an employee is performing acceptably, they would at a minimum receive the wage rate that corresponds to the number of years that they've been in the scene. And I, and I say that, we, we haven't had this problem, so I'm very proud not to have this problem, but if we had an individual in the organization that was not performing, they would be put into progressive discipline and managed away. Because taxpayer dollars in Douglas are rare, and we're not going to spend them to not get service, we only pay for honest service. I would be remiss, at some point, I do want to point out that, Mr. Moderator, I won't start into it, but I do want to point out there is a call firefighter reform as part of this that I'd like to, to mention in my presentation, that I would like to talk to.
I missed just that last sentence, please.
I would like to speak to the call firefighter changes if the, if town meeting one dealt with you, Mr. Moderator.
Please go ahead. Do you want a slide?
Well, I don't want to interrupt the questions and the flow of conversation.
No, go ahead.
So if you have your package in front of you and you're on page thirteen of twenty-six, it says proposed compensation table, public safety positions, sorry, it doesn't, it's on the, now there it is. The existing table, this is very important part of this conversation, the existing table is based on the legacy of the town as a predominantly call department, and is based on wage rates that have for many years been calculated solely on the basis of the minimum wage issue. So a basic firefighter that doesn't have any medic or EMT training who comes in to the, a call position under the existing framework gets paid the minimum wage the first year they worked for us. Society has changed a lot, and the notion of sending someone into harm's way at the minimum wage is not really an acceptable way, nor is it a viable way to recruit people into that type of profession. So we looked at the entire call rates of pay and we tried to align them with what those ranks are paid for full-time staff, but there is, there is a difference, full-time staff is making more per hour than call who are of the same rank, and yet we needed to create space between ranks and levels of experience within this framework. So this new table truly reflects what we anticipate or what we feel is recommended to attract people and retain them, and increasingly important part of our overall service delivery model, which is to continue with a combination department, with a full-time duty crew supplemented extensively with call firefighters and administrators. So I'm sorry to delay, Mr. Moderator, but I thought it was important to point out.
Thank you, other questions?
Thank you, Dave Rivers, Allison Wayne. I just have a question on the, on the steps between the years of service. So we're saying if I'm in OA four, at five years, I'm making twenty-seven, sixty-seven, and then I don't get step bump again for another five years, and that's a dollar and twenty-seven cents. So my question really comes down to, if we surveyed the current town employees, is this something that we feel like we're gonna have employee turn in those, in those larger steps? Because it's not, it doesn't, to me, we like that big of a difference.
Mr. Moderator? If I may?
Please.
Excellent question, thank you for asking it. It is anticipated that by spreading out the steps, the town would have more resources to provide employees and cost of living increase each year, so this table is today, it is a snapshot today, but next year, funding allowing, the COLA may be set at two or two and a half or three percent, and that step would continue to go up at the rate of the COLA increase? So really by the time you, as a step three or step five, get to your step ten, there would be five years' worth of COLAs that have pushed up the step ten salary, so you would notice the difference.
Other questions?
Justin Campbell, four, Walmart. Back to what the lady said about overseeing departments, so let's say if we're going to the highway department, who oversees them and what the quality of work they do? It's like, I live off of R Street, Walmart, and you pull on the R Street up to South Street, it's had that same pothole for the last six years, from East Road to Patchville, and it washes out the next range from it, happens all over town, it's just Patchville, 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 and you smack it in front of it, it's a good town.
The question about the, is fine, the analytic about the, the potholes while, you know, a concern, we need to move on from that, so go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, there was a part of that earlier question that I didn't get to, I'd like to ask it back so that I can finish that. Is there room for merit? And the answer is yes. So a department head may accelerate an employee's progress through the table based on an evaluation, written evaluation, as to your pothole question, I noticed that the highway superintendent is present and should be taking note.
Matt, don't hijack my meeting. So the, yeah, so the, the question was, was more about like, you know, who, who in each department, you know, decides the, you know, the, the, the raises, the steps? So each, each department has a department head that they report to, and that's the person that would, that would determine that. Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none. Article ten does require a simple majority vote, all of those in favor of passing article ten, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? See, you came up with a new system, and I made a note, and it looked like my ex, which means I also need to work on my handwriting and take classes. So article nine, all those in favor of passing article nine, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes have any news? See, you guys missed out on all these slides. And I will take a motion to move article ten as printed in the warrant. Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Anyone like to speak or have any questions on article ten? Okay, then with that, we would like to give the opponent's speech for article ten, over here.
Mr. Moderator, is it necessary to read the paragraph ahead of it?
I'm sorry.
Is it necessary to read the paragraph ahead of the article?
Aye.
So the capital improvement budget for twenty-four was part of our process that we did last year for five-year plan.
So let me just back you up a second, name?
Nine Fitzpatrick, fifty-five Southwest Main Street.
And your position?
On which?
Whichever, may you want both.
Chairman of Capitol and vice chairman of water slot.
Okay, and just bring the mic a little closer, please. Okay, and just bring the mic a little closer, please.
Okay, so this was a part of our five-year plan last year that we proposed to the Capitol Committee, which moved up, there was a couple of changes on the plan from the last year, from last year's law. There was an increase in the cost of a dump truck, I'm just trying to find my place on the other line. So, number four, that price increase from $215 to $265. Number six, increase from $170 to $180. And number two was the cafeteria tables for the primary school last year. They received a donation of some used tables, which would enable them to push that out a little further, and it was a major need for the rooftop units that we replaced on the Douglas High School.
Okay, questions?
Monique Salas, three South Circle. So, I was curious about the amount of money that is being allocated for roadway paving repairs. I noticed it's the same that's been allocated last year. So, with, especially with the build of the warehouse in town, I'm curious as to why there's not been an adjustment on the town side in terms of road paving and repairs, to make sure it can support the infrastructure needed for increased activity at that building.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I can give a short answer on that.
Okay, and if not, I don't matter.
But we had a certain, a survey done of the, all the town roads by Stantec, and they recommended that we spend $1.7 million over the next 20 years to bring, just to bring them up to an acceptable level. Currently, the Chapter 90 money that is appropriated to the town is $363,000. So, we, as a Capitol Committee, recommended that we match those funds and give them a reasonable amount, give the highway superintendent a reasonable amount of money to repair roads. He can go into further what he's accomplished over the money that he got with the last year, and what he intends to do this year.
Do you want to follow up to that, or is that good?
So, is he going to speak on that?
I'm sorry?
Is the highway superintendent going to speak on that?
If the highway superintendent would like to. The reason why I'm smiling kind of oddly is because I asked this very same question at one of the previous board of selectman meetings, so I know the answer. I'm like, boy, no answer this one.
John Frye, highway superintendent, Long Stone Road Drive. Last year, we paved 2.28 miles of roads with about $960,000, sections of Southwest Main, on West Main, Cemetery Street, and Vine Street. This year, we're proposing a section of South Street, a little over a mile, with some new drainage. The early costs from the pavement study, Mr. Fitzpatrick spoke about, just the paving alone is around $600,000, and then in with that, we have to do some drainage improvements as well. We don't have those methods, it's in the hands of our engineer right now, but that's the plan for paving this year.
So, please let me see if I can clarify your question just a little bit, because I think there's still a piece of it that's still unanswered, which is, why isn't level funded each year? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yeah, please.
So, a couple of quick points. One that I want to emphasize, my finance directors will love me for saying it, is to point out the funding source for capital spending in the town of Douglas is free cash, not taxes. So, this is money that has been collected or not spent, or collected above the forecast that closes to the account of the town as a reserve, and is now given to the Capitol Committee to spend on capital projects. So, this doesn't go into your real estate tax. Having said that, it is a finite resource, and so, we're, the Capitol Committee every year meets and goes through a rather long process of rating all of the different proposals from the different department heads on what needs to be done around town. This commitment to match the state's contribution to our paving efforts is brand new. It was brand new in fiscal '22, it's something that the town is only able to do now, because it's in better financial condition than it was five years ago. We are being guided by a professional engineer's report, as has been mentioned, to target those, the first thing we do is you take the best care you can of the roads you have that are already in good condition, so you don't let that deteriorate, and then over time prioritize those that need to be fixed. There was some discussion, I believe, from the questioner, Mr. Moderator, about what's going on with where we're doing construction. To the extent that pipes are being put in the ground on Gilboa Street and North Street, part of the project that will not come out of the $360,000 is curb-to-curb paving on Gilboa Street and North, and Northeast Main, as we complete those water and sewer projects. So, those paving costs were rolled into the construction bids for the utility insulation. I'll say answers to the questions.
Sorry, hold on one second, please.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up.
Okay, I'm just waiting for the mic, please.
Monique Salas, three South Circle. So, my follow-up is, you know, I just, as I'm driving through town in my commutes, I can, every turn is seeming to be in need of repair, and so, my concern is, you know, I just wonder how are we going to see change over the next four years, because I know this capital improvement is laid out for four years. So, are you saying that there's extra that's going to be allotted from free cash year after year?
So, the, Mr. Moderator, if I may, the future capital, the next five years or the four years of the plan are based on some assumptions about what we're able to generate in terms of free cash every year. So, we're assuming that we will continue to do what we have done, which is generate about $1 million to $1.2 million a year in free cash. Should that never come in higher because of new growth, there will be more resources for the Capitol Committee to allocate to any, the various projects as they rate them. But we wanted to establish a budget that was stable and reliable, so that the highway superintendent could build those relationships, and that we could make our progress against our plan, that everybody at the state level does care very much about being able to get through it.
And just to clarify that, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this, the money that's being allocated there is to bolster the budget, not be the budget for road repair.
So, it's a long, complicated answer, Mr. Moderator, but I'll try to make it as simple as possible. Every few years, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will go out and issue a bond, and under Chapter 90 allocates the funds to the various communities to fund roadway construction and pavement. And it is a formula allocation in the town of Douglas, we pretty much can count down $360,000, plus or minus a few thousand every year. But this is in addition to that. So, we get the state money, and then we match it dollar for dollar with town funds.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing, just under the wire, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just, is there going to be some acceleration in repairs? That's my thing.
Is it, one more time, please?
Is there going to be some acceleration for repairs over the next four years before this is fully operational? That's all, and I promise that's the one.
So, I think what I heard your question was, does this money in the capital budget accelerate repairs?
So, Mr. Moderator, I can't, from my position, commit the future decisions of the Capitol Committee, which is a freestanding committee created by bylaw of the town. I encourage everyone who has an interest in this issue to participate on the Capitol Committee, because that's how we have ways for it to occur, and the funding allocations that you want to see take place as a resident and taxpayer will become reality.
Okay, anyone else like to speak on the article? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to transferring the sum of $1,334,985 from available funds to fund the capital projects and associated costs? Seeing none.
What, what do you mean? Well, can you put, I just read, this is what I'm watching.
Maybe, Mr. Moderator, we should just always let Jean read it.
I'm collecting this night's last fight just around.
Absolutely, can you, can you tell me what I'm trying to say?
The only thing I'm going to add is that there was $79,765 transferred from completed projects, and a transfer of free cash of $1,255,220, for a total of $1,334, I'm sorry,
Sorry, dissent to passing what Jean said. Okay, seeing none. Article 10 passes unanimously. This is not unlike my parents, by the way. Tell, tell me what I'm saying. Strike that from the record, please. Okay, Article 11. Not yet, almost. Okay, I will accept a motion to move Article 11 as printed in the law. Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded, I will now accept a report from the Planning Committee. I have a memo from the Planning Board. It's a public hearing dated March 23, 2023, voted 7 to 0 in favor of supporting favorable action for Article 11 as printed in 2023 Douglas Annual Town Meeting Law. Would anyone like to speak on Article 11? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 11 unanimously? Okay, seeing none, Article 11 passes unanimously. You put on a tie for nothing, and even get to come up and speak. I will accept the motion to pass over Article 12. Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded, is there any dissent to passing over Article 12? Okay, seeing none, pass over Article 12. Article 13, I'll accept the motion to move Article 13 as printed in the law. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Would anyone like to speak on Article 13? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 13 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 13 passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming tonight, I appreciate everyone who participates in town government. If you have any questions that maybe were not answered or follow-ups, please feel free to come up and see us at the conclusion of the meeting. While this list is not currently accurate, all of our committees, I believe, have at least a spot open, and if they don't, there's certainly volunteer opportunities to continue to take part in town. One of the best ways I always say to get involved is to call board of selectmen's office and just say, hey, you know, these are some of my skills, these are some things I've done in life, how can I possibly best help the town? And usually, it'll be someone who can guide you to, you know, hopefully, hopefully give you back. So, with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Motion made, is there a second? Okay, any dissent to leaving? Seeing none. Okay, please make sure you turn in your voter card on your way out. Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.